We'll get to that. Our first item always is public comment, and we do have someone signed up to speak, Michael Johnson, if you'd like to come up and tell us what you want.
What?
What?
You mean, people who come here ask for things? I am Michael Johnson. I am the chairman of the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association. We've visited you many times in the past seventeen years. I do have to comment, though, and it's a comment I made before. In the Pledge of Allegiance, there is no comma after "under God."
There is when I say it.
My wife, the English instructor, would just, would, her hackles would come up. We all learned it because it all changed back in the nineteen fifties or sixties. Anyway, last March, we had a work session. And in that work session, we identified four areas of conversation, and one of those was some traffic calming devices. I realize that we are a neighborhood that is in the county, and we're, we've been accused of trying to act like a city, but we're trying to act like a neighborhood. Over and over in the past several months, I have heard the comment from neighbors about speed bumps, and we know that speed bumps are something that fire departments and police departments are not very, very fond of. But we need to address some of the speeding issues in the east part of Salem, to the east of I-5 and inside Corden Road, which is, well, it's, from the neighbor's point of view, it's increasing. Two comments today, though, some things I've seen in the past while that we'd add to the list of fourteen traffic calming devices. Was in Wilsonville last week, and I noticed that Wilsonville paints their walkways, they're a kind of a brick red. They're very noticeable, and when you come to those, you know you're at an intersection and a walkway, and hopefully you pay attention and slow down. It's, it caught my attention. The other one is something, I was back in Michigan a month ago, and saw this odd thing that you couldn't turn left on a traffic light, where there was absolutely no traffic coming. And my first thought was, go through the light, go into a parking lot, do a U-turn in the parking lot, come back out, and then make my right turn so I could go on. And I said, why can't you make a left turn here? There's no traffic. And almost, at no time was there, in the two days I was there, was there any traffic. Come to find out, Michigan has a unique way of handling traffic without using traffic lights, and it's called a Michigan Left. I don't know if you've ever heard of it, or if you've ever seen it. It forces you to turn right, go down a couple hundred yards, and then into a wide spot in the roadway, you come to, you literally, you make a, a left into an area, so that now you're only crossing one lane of traffic. And when you do that, you'll only have to look one direction, which is now to your right, for oncoming traffic, and you turn left. I saw this on roadways in Mount Pleasant, Michigan, which is where I was, roadways in East Lansing, as I got further down the state. I also saw it on sixty-five mile-an-hour highways, albeit they were divided highways, and it worked. It only took me a couple of times to figure it out. I've heard the comment made here, when we start talking about Corden Road, that, oh, we can't do that here because, and these are fixes that people have provided for Corden Road, we can't do that because, oh, the people wouldn't recognize that. I would hope that in some future discussions about East Salem transportation, that we can address traffic calming or traffic handling device, such as the Michigan Left on, out on Corden Road. And one of the things, too, about Corden Road, we also mentioned this in our work session, and in fact, I believe I provided you a map, there's going to be a series of twenty-two streetlights, twenty-two traffic lights on Corden, beginning at Skyline, all the way out to Silverton Road. Twenty-two lights. So that any dream of Corden Kubler becoming a I-105 byway that is down in Eugene with twenty-two lights is just simply, isn't going to happen. Speeds of fifty-five miles an hour aren't going to happen unless it's well-controlled, and I'm, I've been told by both city and county traffic engineers that you can't control the highway that well, so you can maintain fifty-five. I hope that we get to have the discussion at another time. So, am I asking for anything? No consideration, yes. Did I ask you to spend any money yet? Not yet. Maybe the time will come. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Michael. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. So, when you talk about this Michigan Left on Corden Road, can you give me an example of where you would?
Well, there are a number of properties that now exit onto Corden.
Correct. Like, commercial properties as residential properties?
Commercial and residential, well, mostly residential. There's the Ballfields there on Corden, just north of the fire station.
Terrera Gardens.
Terrera Gardens. Then there's properties to the south of State Street. Typically, they are on the east side of State. There's properties to the north of State, as we get close to Auburn Road. There's properties north of Center Street, all the way down to Silverton Road that exit onto Corden, and the way they get off of Corden, where they come left, north or south, is they have to turn from Corden into their property. One of the discussions that I've heard in the past was that all of those will be done away with, you only get a right in and a right out. Or, in order to get into your property, there will be property condemnation that would bring you in off of one of the side streets, i.e. Center, Auburn, State, McClay, which for commercial properties would kind of kill their business.
Follow-up, if I may, Mr. Chair, just really quick. So, what, the Michigan Left, if I understand it, so if I was heading north on Corden and had the property on the, on the left side, or the, which would be the west, I would actually go into a right-hand lane over here, and then still cross, somehow cross Corden Road at one place to come back? I'm just trying to make sure I can picture what you described.
If you went onto the internet, you'd, you'd find it. If you were coming out of here, rather than turning left here, you would come, it may be a couple hundred yards, it may be four hundred yards, but somewhere down here, you would come into, this would be a
Left-hand turn.
Exit lane of some kind. It'd be like if you were going off on the side of a road, say, if you're familiar with Pennsylvania, how you come off to the, on the right-hand lane. You would come off in a center lane over here, come to a, a right angle to the southbound lane, and then make your left-hand turn under better control.
I understand it now, thank you.
So, it was a cheap solution to an expensive problem. I thought they had a good idea. Any other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right, next item is our consent calendar. Commissioner Carlson.
Mr. Chair, I will move today's consent calendar. Under Board of Commissioners, we have one OLCC application recommended for approval. It's at Elcor and Golf Course in Lyons. Under Finance, approve an order setting a public hearing to consider granting an exemption under ORS 279C.335 to allow an alternative competitive process pursuant to Marion County Public Contracting Rules. Under Health, approve Amendment Number Eight, adding $187,831 to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Public Health Emergency Preparedness and WIC Program. Approve Amendment Number Sixteen, adding $1,276,795 to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Oregon Health Authority for Community Addictions and Mental Health Services. And approve Amendment Number One, adding $12,500 to the Contract for Services with Childhood Health Associates for the Behavior/Health Consultant and Extend Contract through September 30th, 2014. Under Public Works, approve Amendment Number Two to the Lease Agreement with Warehouser Columbia Timberlands LLC for the Lease of the House Mountain Communication Site. And under Sheriff, approve Amendment Number Three, adding $7,034.68 to the Intergovernmental Agreement with the Bureau of Land Management for Patrol Services on BLM Land.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to approve the consent calendar, just read. Any further discussion? You're in, and all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. None opposed, obviously, the motion passes. Then, we have a special item, as soon as I could organize a little bit more. We do this pretty much annually, I think it is annually. We consider approval of a proclamation designating September 17th to 23rd, 2014, as Constitution Week in Marion County. It's Day Weston, Region of Schmeckata Chapter, Daughters of American Revolution. So, if you'd like to come up, and whoever else, and just go ahead. If you'd just pull the microphone real close, and please introduce those with you, too.
Thank you. My name is Day Westin. I'm the Regent of Schmeckata Chapter, Daughters of American Revolution, here in Salem. I brought with me my Vice Regent, Cookie Feskins, Joyce Peters, and Arlita Day.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Well, we would like to get a proclamation from you stating that September 17th through September 23rd is honoring Constitution Week, because the Constitution of the United States was signed on September 17th, 1787, by our founding fathers and delegates.
All right, I think we'll be happy to do that. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Carlson usually wants to show her knowledge of the Constitution off, so...
Well, Commissioner Brentano asked if I brought my Constitution book today, and I actually had it on the shelf, it's right next to where I plug in my cellphone, but I didn't bring it today, because every year we provide this resolution, this proclamation, and just very pleased to do that. Every year you come and remind us of the importance of the Constitution as part of our heritage, and I think that we all recognize that those original principles that the founding fathers put forth in the Constitution are as vibrant and as important today as ever, and we certainly appreciate the opportunity to, to recognize that and to think back on our heritage, and to really appreciate all of the freedoms and the structure and the checks and balances and all the other things that went into that. It was a visionary piece of work. It is a model for the rest of the world, and we're just fortunate to live in the land that we live in.
Do you have any comments?
No. Other than it's an honor to do this.
I do have one, and I don't, I wish I would have paid closer attention, but I got a little lesson in constitutional law just last night, as I was kind of falling asleep. And there was a senator, don't have his name or place, but his argument was having to do with the president's response to this ISIS and Syria and Iraq, and he was going over whether the president truly had powers to instigate some type of offensive. And he went back showing up Madison letters, and, and the answer was no. If it's long-term, and if it's offensive, that's Congress to decide. So, just a little way how even what's written in 1787 still matters, still analyzed, still relevant. And the key point on why that wasn't, because Madison felt that kings and emperors were the first and most likely just to go to war. And so, here in the United States, we'd do it different, let it buffer it a little bit, and bring it back for some wider discussion. So, you can watch for that, see how it turns out. Anyway, we do have a proclamation, we have a copy that we, hopefully, will sign and give to you, and then we'll read. So, could I have a motion to approve this, please?
Make a motion to approve the proclamation in a matter observing September 17th through the 23rd, 2014, as Constitution Week in Marion County.
I'll second the motion.
All right, let's move and second to approve the proclamation. Any further discussion? All question, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, the motion passes. And now, we like, as we do, we'll read it, and Commissioner Cameron, if you'd begin?
This matter came before the Marion County Board of Commissioners at its regular scheduled public meeting on Wednesday, September 10th, 2014. Whereas the Constitution of the United States of America, the guardian of our liberties, embodies the principles of limited government in a republic dedicated to rule by law, and whereas we celebrate our heritage as a country bound together by fidelity to the set of ideas and a system of governance laid out in America's Constitution. The product of fierce debate and enduring compromise, our nation's Constitution has guided our progress from thirteen to fifty United States that stretch from sea, the Shining Sea.
And whereas September 17th, 2014, marks the 227th anniversary of the framing of the Constitution of the United States of America by the Constitutional Convention, and whereas, this week, we reflect on the basic rights and responsibilities of citizenship, the founding documents from which they were drawn, and an extraordinary legacy of progress they have enabled, let us forever uphold the ideals the framers enshrined in our Constitution, and let us never cease in our pursuit of the more perfect union they imagined so many years ago, and?
Now, therefore, by virtue of the authority vested in us commissioners for Marion County, we do hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now, I note a couple
Yeah, well, you want the imperfect one, or do you want us to? It says "American" rather than "America."
We're getting a punctuation lesson this morning.
I'm sorry. I read it beforehand, and I didn't notice that. Let's see, it's, what's the, tenth day of?
And then, if you'd come up, I'll present this imperfect document.
Unlike our Constitution, right?
They want to get a photo? Would you like a group photo, Day? I'll come up here and take a quick one.
We could find somebody to take that for you.
Tammy, you wanted to snap the photo? Other duties as assigned, right?
Yeah, she gets everything, doesn't she? Just line up here in front, and we'll... Go ahead, squeeze in one.
Says "out of memory."
Out of memory.
You want me to do what? I can take it with my phone.
Do one and send it to him, would you, Tammy? No memory, I thought she was talking about me for a minute.
One, two, three. There you go.
That was great, yeah.
When you think about it, you say "Atia,"
Atia.
And you take a picture, and you smile.
All right, thank you all.
It was a great moment.
Now, our next item is three related, having to do with the Oregon Workforce Investment Act and Local Workforce Board. Let's see, there's no name, Tony Frazier is here. The first item is resolution designating a new local workforce investment area consisting of Lynn, Marion, Polk, and Yam Hill Counties. So, Gloria, somebody prepared, or where did Tony go?
Oh, you can have Tony, he's right here.
Would you come up and, and just tell us what we're, what you're looking for this morning? And, of course, introduce yourselves, please.
I'm Tony Frazier, Executive Director, Job Growers Incorporated. I have with me today Kelly Standis. She is an intern from Willamette University, senior this year, majoring in politics. What better way for her to be exposed to that than at this, in this arena?
Much better here than down there.
So, and she assured me that she has much of what we talked about today fresh in her memory through her classes. So, the resolution that, I'm assuming is before you there, okay, is to bring Lynn County on as part of our region. Just to give you a little bit of background, there's a lot of, of course, workforce investment redesign going on in the state, and Lynn, Benton, and Lincoln County is considered Region Four. They're looking at bringing on the North Coast Counties, Tillamook, Clatsop, and Columbia. Getting a geography lesson these days. Lynn County has looked at that, they're considering all their options. They don't know that they would be well-served by a six-county region that would include coastal counties, which obviously have different challenges than our, than our counties here in the Valley. And so, they are requesting to become part of this region through that, through this resolution process. Did get positive votes from Yam Hill already, and from Polk County yesterday, actually. Yam Hill expressed that they have partnered really well with Lynn County on a couple of initiatives, I wasn't aware of that, it was good to hear. And Polk County was very open to bringing Lynn County on, in that we have a lot of sectors and different things that align really well with Lynn County, so that's where we've landed so far.
All right, thank you. Questions or comments?
Just a question for Kelly, maybe, if that's okay. Glad to see you down here where real politics happens, in local politics versus over at the Capitol. What are you hoping to do when you get done at Willamette?
You're going to ask me to throw everyone? I'm not sure yet, that's why I'm here, trying to, you know, get as much exposure as I can and try out different things, so...
Good, well, feel free to come back and visit with us in any way.
Thank you.
Good. Thanks, Tony.
Absolutely.
Well, I just want to tag on to Commissioner Cameron's comments, because I graduated from Willamette University in political science many years ago, so, see, there's a future for you in local politics, if you follow the same path. So, with regard to the resolution, we were approached, as were other counties, and what, and as the staff was at the, at Job Growers, about Lynn County joining our, our local workforce board. We have worked really well together as Marion Polk and Yam Hill County for many, many years, and when this redesign happened, I know that our board had some discussions about it, and we were very, what's the word, very adamant that we did not want to restructure they, I think the map that we saw initially was quite a large area for them, for the mid-valley, and we just said, you know, once it gets too large, we really kind of lose that local flavor for what we're doing and, and the successes that we've had. However, as you mentioned, Lynn County has been a partner with Marion County in a number of different fronts. I work together, we all do, at the Association of Oregon Counties for many years. They've been part of the Midvalley Behavioral Care Network, and that's changing right now because of the healthcare transformation, so they're actually moving out of that, but they were an excellent partner there. I know Commissioner Brentano works with them in the Council of Forest Trustlands and, and the ONC, right? So, there's just a number of areas where we have commonality, and as you mentioned, Tony, the, if we're looking at workforce development, and our major industry outside of government is agriculture, and their major industry is agriculture, and you drive down I-5, and it's kind of hard to see where Marion County ends and Lynn County begins, I think we do have a lot in common, and this would make a good partnership. And I can see where Lynn County is kind of questioning how the North Coast and some of those interests are really going to be able to, to jive with what it is that they've been doing. So, I think it's, it doesn't make it too large or cumbersome, it's one more county. As I said, we've worked well with them, we have a lot in common with them, so I'm very supportive of this resolution to add them, and it will mean some more probably structural things that we're going to do. For example, the next resolutions that we're signing just have the three counties on them, so I'll probably have to come back at some point and add the fourth one in once this is all official, but this is really the first step in making that happen today. And thank you for coming over and helping us move through these items.
We're to decide on three items, all pretty much related with workforce, but I think we'll break them out into three separate motions, if we could.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move this first motion, then, which would be that the board approve the resolution designating a new local workforce investment area consisting of Lynn, Marion, Polk, and Yam Hill Counties.
I'll second the motion.
Okay, it's moved and seconded to pass a resolution designating the new workforce including, well, Lynn, Marion, Polk, and Yam Hill Counties. Further discussion?
Well, because they start with an L, they get to be first now, I don't know.
Is that what it is?
Yeah, I don't know if I like that, because Marion was always first, but we'll, we can talk about that later.
Slip a Y on them.
I think they need to kind of like, go to the end. Just kidding.
All right. Any further discussion? If not, call a question, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. The second is a memorandum of understanding for Local Workforce Investment Board recertification of the Oregon Workforce Investment, authorizing Commissioner Cameron to sign the recertification. Perhaps, Tony, could you speak on what that recertification involves?
Yeah, it's recertification of the board and changing the deadlines. So, so, WEOA, Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act, that was recently signed by the president, will be changing some of the way that the workforce boards are, are formed, in, in respect to mandated partners and so forth. So, this also moves the deadlines to June 30, 2015, because that act becomes effective June, July 1st, 2015. So, this will extend that, approve the board to that deadline. The governor decided that it, it didn't really make sense to make a lot of big changes with that coming, so that, that first one there is, is in respect to that.
Well, Mr. Chair, if I could add, adding ResCare as the one-stop partner is also in this one, right? So, that's an important part, because up until recently, well, many years ago, we contracted with Schmeckata Community College to provide those work source Oregon services. Then we moved it in-house, and the Job Growers, Inc., actually provided those service, direct services
Correct.
Along with managing the workforce board. The directive, through these, this transformation of workforce that's coming from the governor's office, there's actually a rule that has been formed saying that that can no longer be. So, the board worked through a request for proposals process, had a number of applicants that came in and said, we can run this. ResCare rose to the top, they have accepted the contract, and so now we have to add them to this agreement as well.
Correct.
I'm a little bit confused, does that blend in with the second item we're working on, too?
Right, is that extension as ResCare workforce services as a one-stop partner?
They kind of tie together.
All right, yeah. All right, could I get a motion concerning Item B, memorandum of understanding?
Mr. Chair, I'll move that we approve a memorandum of understanding for Local Workforce Investment Board recertification for the Oregon Workforce Investment, authorizing Commissioner Cameron, myself, to sign the recertification.
I'll second the motion, and actually, the, it looks like the memos are flipped in our notebook, so I was looking at the second one in our notebook, which is the third one on the agenda, so that's where I got confused. But, yeah, they all work together.
Yeah.
Sorry.
And you did second that?
I did.
All right, so, it's moved and seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding of local workforce investment, and authorize Commissioner Cameron to sign. Further discussion? And then, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, the motion passes. And then, we've kind of already talked And then, we've kind of already talked about, is there anything to add to memorandum of understanding for Region Three Local Unified Plan? Tony, anything?
Nothing to add.
That's the one I was just talking about, so I don't have anything to add on that one.
All right.
So, Mr. Chair, I would move that the board approve a memorandum of understanding for Region Three Local Unified Plan modification, extending the effective date between the one-stop partner through June 30, 2014, and adding ResCare Workforce Services as a one-stop partner, authorizing Commissioner Cameron to sign the memorandum of understanding.
I'll second.
Okay, moved and seconded to approve the memorandum of understanding. Any further discussion? And then all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. So, all three are passed, and thank you, Tony, and good luck to you. They have political science at Oregon State, too, just so you know.
Thank you, Commissioners.
But Willamette is in Salem, right in the heart of state governments.
All right.
And in Marion County, which is the world's best county. How many days do you have to get this in, Tony? It's due Friday, right? Yeah, right, exactly. Right. Yeah, so it's quick.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you.
Thanks, Tony.
All right, it is 9:30, we have a public hearing scheduled at that time, and it's a public hearing to consider a zone change, comprehensive plan amendment, conditional use. Case number ZCCPCU 14003, Portland General Electric, Clerk's File Number 5687. And Joe Fenimore and others are here. All right, and I'll open that meeting. And for the record, I have one written comment from Bill Fuji, 3390 Holiday Drive, basically in support of the proposal. And we're ready to begin. So, Joe Fenimore, would you like to start?
Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, this is Joe Fenimore. This item before you today is an application to change the comprehensive plan designation from rural residential to public, to change the zone from acreage residential to public, and for a conditional use to establish a solar power generating facility on a 52-acre parcel located in the 52 to 5400 block of Auburn Road. Properties to the northwest and east are zoned AR and developed with residential homesites. Properties to the west and south are zoned P and developed with ball fields and electrical substation. Industrial zone property is located to the southeast and contains a wrecking yard. The hearings officer held a public hearing on this application on July 2, 2014, and issued a recommendation that the board approve the request subject to conditions. The conditions include right-of-way dedication and improvements, removal of a fence in the right-of-way, stormwater management, installing and maintaining a vegetated buffer, and a submittal of a sound study. At the hearing, issues were raised regarding property values, security, noise, traffic, pesticide and herbicide use, light pollution, glare, wetland and groundwater protection, and habitat loss. The hearings officer addressed each of these concerns and found that with the recommended conditions of approval, the proposed facility is compatible with the existing residential development in the area. In addition, the hearings officer determined that not all of the uses listed in the P-zone were appropriate for the property, and recommends a limited use overlay be applied. The hearings officer analyzed all the uses permitted outright and conditionally in the P-zone, and determined which of those are appropriate on the property at this time. The permitted uses include farm and forest uses, farm buildings including a dwelling, utility facilities necessary for public service, and police and fire stations. All other uses listed in the P-zone would require a conditional use, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Joe?
Not yet, for me.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Certainly.
Just for full disclosure, on an ex parte announcement here, I did call Wendy Valles of PGE after a citizen called me about this particular issue. She did not return my call, and I did not get any more information, so I don't believe it has impacted my ability to make judgment on this issue.
Okay. All right, anything else, Joe?
Not at this time.
Certainly bring you back later. I see some people, Jeff Tross, would you like? Well, those in, I'll make that announcement, too. We do have a letter, but you don't need to, if you'd go ahead and get set up, Jeff, and start making the applicant's presentation. But anybody from the general public that would like to speak, we'll make this signup sheet available. Please, come right up front. Oh, I guess they do, usually prefer them on the side one.
It's easier for the camera to get the exhibits and stuff.
Anybody who wanted to sign up?
Jeff will need you speaking to the microphone, if you want to be standing up, we'll find a portable one if you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners. We're going to move some chairs around, there'll be three or four of us at the table, and will be available in five seconds.
Good morning, my name is Jim Reel, Portland General Electric, project manager for this Bethel project. Thank you guys for seeing us today. This zone change and conditional use permit that we'll be discussing is the first major step in the development of this project, and without that, this site can't even be considered. Utility-scale power generation projects typically take years to develop, so it's important to emphasize that this is the, we're still in the preliminary stage. We have lots of work ahead of us to determine whether this facility, a facility on this site makes sense, excuse me, and would fit into PGE's overall resource plan. Naturally, if we decide to move forward with this project, after we receive all local and state approvals, we'll work closely with the county and staff to ensure that we're notified prior to any physical work being done on the site. And as always, we'll strive to keep neighbors informed and minimize any disruptions in the community. And with that, I'm going to hand it over to Jeff.
Thank you, Jim, and good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Jeff Tross, land use consultant here this morning on behalf of Portland General Electric. My office address is 1720 Liberty Street Southeast, Salem, 97302. And before I proceed, I'd like to ask Kevin Whitner, project engineer, to introduce himself, as he'll also be presenting information.
My name is Kevin Whitner, I'm an employee of Portland General Electric. My role on the project is lead engineer, working with Jim.
Thank you, well, nice to see you again. It's been a little while, and my first appearance before Commissioner Cameron, so welcome to the board. We're going to provide basically a two-part discussion this morning. First, I'd like to discuss the project and the property, and its attributes, and why it's suitable for the proposed solar generator plant, and then I'll ask Jim to give you some information about what a solar project is, what it involves, how it operates. We'll try not to go too long, so please feel free to ask any questions as we proceed with this. First, we're very pleased to be here with the positive recommendation from the hearings officer. The hearings officer in this case did a particularly thorough job of addressing all the issues and concerns that were presented at that public hearing, addressing all the questions with very detailed responses. We think that contributes to a very thorough recommendation. We're also in agreement with the conditions of approval, so we have no concerns or issues about anything that's in the hearings officer's report. This application is really about the future. It's about how the county land use plan can adapt to new technologies that serve the public, and it's an opportunity for the county to participate in providing a site for renewable, sustainable source of electric power. And in fact, the idea to enable power generation from alternative sources has roots in the comprehensive plan. The energy section of the comprehensive plan recognized that it will be necessary to develop alternative sources of energy as time goes by. And Energy Policy Two states the county's intent to encourage the use and development of alternative energy sources. And not just a recommendation, but it states an intent for the county to encourage exactly the type of thing that Portland General Electric is bringing to you this morning. So, this proposal is right in line with the statements that occur or appear in the comprehensive plan, and recognizing that the comprehensive plan was adopted some 30 or more years ago. It's a fairly far-reaching and far-reaching document with foresight as to what might be appropriate at this time in the county. The statewide planning goals also recognize the importance of energy facilities. I'd like to mention a few of the places where energy appears in the statewide planning goals. First, state planning goal five, which is the natural resources goal, recommends protecting sites for the generation of electricity, including solar generation. Goal nine recognizes that the availability of energy is a factor in planning for economic development. Goal 11 recommends that plans should designate sites for power generation facilities, as well as electric transmission lines. And goal 13, which is the energy conservation goal, where we might expect this sort of thing to appear, recommends the use of renewable energy sources wherever possible. So, again, between the county comprehensive plan and the statewide planning goals on which it's based, there's plenty of foundation for this type of project, and a planning foundation for the proposal that we bring to you this morning. And interestingly, this would not be the first power generation facility to appear in Marion County. As some of you may recall, there was the Bethel Power Plant, which was located on State Street immediately south of the subject property we'll be talking about today. That was a diesel-fueled turbine generator facility, it was closed and dismantled in the 1990s. That site is now a power distribution substation owned and operated by PGE. It's already zoned public, as it has been since the adoption of the comprehensive plan. The importance here is that the proximity of that former power generation facility, now a substation, provides critical infrastructure for the solar power generator, should you approve this site for it. And it makes duplication of that type of facility unnecessary. Obviously, when power is generated, it has to be sent into the power grid through transmission lines and a substation. The Bethel Substation does just that at this location. We have a board over on, over to my left, on your right, it's an aerial photo, and I'll use my pointer to orient a few things. The subject property are these vacant lands being shown by the red pointer. Down to the south is the former Bethel Power Substation. In fact, you see these two round objects, which were large diesel-fuel storage tanks, they no longer exist. State Street is down at the bottom of the photo, so from State Street north, we have PGE property, which is currently the Bethel Substation. There's a vacated railroad right-of-way, used to be known as the Gear Line, now in private ownership. Then there's the PGE property, which is this large extent of vacant land, and then the rural residential area along Hampton Lane, extending up to Auburn Road, which is just the very north end of the property. And here, we have a subdivision along 53rd Avenue, but everything surrounding that subdivision is vacant property held by PGE. So, here we have the relationship between the proposed solar generating facility and the substation, and there are power transmission lines currently located along Hampton Lane, which help tie everything together. With regards to the property itself, the ownership totals approximately 52 acres, and it's expected, at least on a preliminary basis, that the solar array would occupy approximately 27 acres, or just about half of the total ownership. Now, the property is currently zoned AR, that stands for acreage residential. It is commonly misunderstood to mean agricultural residential, but that's not the case. It's acreage residential, which is Marion County's rural residential zone. I've always wondered why we simply don't call it what it is and avoid the confusion. It's the rural residential zone. It would be nice if we called it rural residential, but it's been called acreage residential, which I guess indicates the rural nature of rural living. It's meant for small acreage subdivisions and homesites, and so we have that particular title. The property was acquired by Portland General Electric to prevent noise impacts from the former Bethel Power Plant. It was a turbine plant, it was infamous, if you will, for creating a noise impact on the surrounding area. PGE acquired this vacant property mainly during the 1970s to prevent the development of additional homesites, which could be affected by noise from the Bethel Plant when it was operating. It would be an interesting question to ask, why the property we're talking about today, the 52 acres, wasn't zoned public when the comprehensive plan was put together and adopted in the late 1970s and early 80s? PGE owned the property at that time, it's a utility company. The public zone was applied at that time to lands that were in public use or owned for public purposes, such as fire stations, ball fields, schools, churches, electrical generating stations. For some reason, this property, although it was owned by PGE at the time, was not zoned public, which would have been appropriate at that time. That's history now, but certainly if it had been zoned in keeping with its ownership at that time, we wouldn't need to be here today, but that's just a fact of history. There used to be a house on the property, it was located on the parcel that's east of Hampton Lane, it was an old house in poor condition. PGE donated it to Marion County Fire District One for practice burn. It no longer exists, it's been gone, so there are no houses on this property. The property remains as an orchard and open fields, it's been leased for farming as a way to maintain the property, but it is not zoned for farm use, and it is not protected by zoning for farm use. Again, it's zoned for rural residential development in the AR zone. There are some wooded areas along the western edge and along the far eastern edge, these are drainages, tributaries of Fruitland Creek, which contribute to the Pudding River drainage. There are some wetlands in that area. The preliminary site design avoids any impact on the wetlands, and as that is further clarified through delineation, any refinement of the site design will avoid impact on the wetlands, so that won't be an issue. There is already property zoned public in this vicinity, the Marion County Fire District One station over on Corden Road, and then the Holland Park ball fields are just to the west of the property, and they're zoned public. To the south, across the former right-of-way, as I mentioned, the Bethel Substation is zoned public. The soccer fields just to the west are also zoned public, and there is a strip of land zoned for industrial development just to the east of the Bethel Substation, so all the land to the south is either in a public or an industrial zone. The property borders no land that is zoned for farm use. There is no EFU zoning in the area surrounding the property, so there's no issue in terms of its relationship to resource land. There's no farmland, there's no forest land that adjoins this property. So, the public zone makes sense for this property, both because of its long-term ownership by the utility company, its proximity to the Bethel Substation, and the existing power transmission lines, and its relationship to the surrounding area. I'll be happy to answer any questions about the nature of the property and its characteristics. If not, at this time, I'd like to refer to Kevin Whitner, who can describe the proposal and what a power generating facility involves.
All right. Go ahead, Kevin.
So, the proposed solar photovoltaic generating plant at this site is very typical of photovoltaic sites all across the state and actually across the country. You may be familiar with them.
Can you pull the microphone a little closer, please?
Oh, sure. If you've driven by this rest area out, it can be, you may have seen our 1.7-megawatt solar facility out there. So, the first thing that people think of when they see a photovoltaic site or think about that, is you think about the solar panels. Of course, they take up the bulk of the land space, they're the large panels, they're about three feet by five feet in dimension, they're either very dark blue or black color, they're fairly unassuming on the landscape. Those panels are designed to harvest sunlight and create that energy from sunlight into electrical energy that we can put onto our electric grid. Those panels are quite innocuous, they have no moving parts, they don't have any liquids or chemicals. They don't have any liquids or chemicals or anything that can spill. They typically now, the state-of-the-art for electric PV panels is to have approximately 20 to 25-year life, so they last a quite long time. They don't generate noise. They harvest energy from sunlight, and that's essentially all they do. Now, an aspect of a solar plant that people are probably less familiar with is what we call the inverters. So that energy that we get from the sunlight on the panels is DC electricity. It's the same kind of electricity you'd have in a flashlight battery or your cellphone. It is not compatible with the electricity that we have on our electric grid, which is AC or alternating current. So what we have to do is take all of the power being generated by those panels, and we have to convert that into alternating current and put that onto our grid. As Jeff mentioned, this is a very fortuitous site because of its proximity to the Bethel Substation. It's important for these projects for utilities to have a way to tie that into the system and get that energy on the grid where it's useful. The fact that the Bethel Substation is there, the fact that it has some extra real estate within the substation fence, it has electrical infrastructure that allows us to tie into that, is very helpful and helps to justify the economics of the project. I mentioned the inverters because they do tend to get some focus in terms of the fact that they're different from the panels. As I said, the panels don't make any noise, they have no moving parts, they're very innocuous. The inverters, on the other hand, they do have a bit of, I guess you'd call it an electrical hum. That's a common issue. It's been dealt with many, many times across the country in all of these kinds of installations. And certainly, PGE would use state-of-the-art in terms of engineering and design to mitigate those issues. Let's see, I think that's probably about it. We have the, Jeff mentioned the old rail right-of-way. Everything on this facility will be attached underground, so we'll be doing a fair bit of trenching there to put all of the conductors underground. We'll cross that railroad, what used to be railroad easements, now in private property. We'll address that through an easement later on as the project progresses. So back to the inverters a little bit. I know that the sound from the inverters has been a concern and an issue that we want to discuss, so I'd like to talk a little bit towards that issue, if I may. So there's several engineering practices that we can use, engineering best practices. Engineering best practice number one is it's much easier to mitigate noise issues if you don't create that noise in the first place. So through our specifications and working with Jim, who's the lead on the project in terms of developing the specification for our contractors, we have the ability to strictly require what the noise emissions from that equipment are. We will certainly select the best and quietest equipment that we can find. That step alone can take that, those noise mitigation issues and reduce them substantially. Okay? So start out with equipment that's quiet. The other thing that we have in our favor that works with us here is the amount of real estate that we have and the distances that are involved. So when you're looking at noise levels that members of the public or residents might be subjected to, it's determined by two things. What's the level of the noise at the source, right at the inverter cabinet? And what's the distance from that to their property line or to their home? In this case, we have several hundred feet to work with, which is substantial. That's a lot of distance. So in sort of the science of measuring and working with noise, as you increase the distance away from that noise source, of course, this is fairly intuitive, but the sound level drops off quite quickly. The type of inverters we're looking at would be probably in, say, the 50 dB range, okay? Fifty decibels is the amount of noise that those inverters would typically emit, and we haven't selected our inverter manufacturer yet, so I'm just using numbers that would be typical. Okay? When you get out to about 150 or 180 feet, that noise level drops in half. So you're down to approximately 25, maybe 30 decibels. So let's talk about decibels a little bit, if you'd like me to, just to give you a sense of noise levels and what we're talking about. If you were measuring the noise level in this room as I'm speaking, you'd be measuring a noise level of about 65 dB. If you went out on the street outside with your noise meter and it was just normal traffic going back and forth, you'd measure a noise level of about 75 dB. If a large truck drove by while you're standing there, you'd measure a noise level of about 85 dB. So we're talking about a 26-acre property here with hundreds of feet of distance that we have to work with, and we can locate those inverters as far south as we can possibly do to stay away from the residences. So we're talking about inverters that would, if you were five feet away from them, would have a noise level of about 50 dB. So that's less than the sound of my voice, it's less than the noise level that you'd have out on the sidewalk. As you get to the nearest property line, and we haven't gotten to the detailed design yet, but if that's 200, say, 150, 200, 250 feet away, you're talking about noise levels that would be approximately in the 20 dB level, and that would be the noise level attributable just to the inverters. Okay? So I want to talk a little bit about the noise level constraints that we have. The noise level constraints that we have are not to increase or add to normal ambient noise levels more than 10 dB at the property line, so let me talk about that. We are required, and we do have in our project plan, to perform a base level noise study. So as the project progresses, we will use a third-party consultant to go out and do a thorough baseline analysis of the noise that's out there. Typically, what you would find in a rural neighborhood, quiet nighttime in a rural neighborhood, would be about 30 dB, if you're a homeowner out there. If you're in a little more suburban kind of area, it might be as high as 45 dB. We are not allowed to increase those levels of noise more than an additional 10, okay? Another 10 dB on top of that by Oregon administrative rules. So reaching that level is actually quite attainable. People do it all the time, and it's not a huge concern of ours. We have several methods that we can use to mitigate that. So we do the noise study, then we do a study of the additional noise sources and make sure that it's properly mitigated by the time it gets to the property line. Okay? So I've mentioned the obvious purchasing inverters that are quiet to start with, locating them as far as we can from the properties. We fully believe that that will achieve the desired result at that point. Okay? There's, there are a couple other measures that are actually not difficult. One is to put up some type of barrier in front of that. That can be a partial concrete block wall that goes up possibly eight or 10 feet, has another barrier for that sound. Okay? We can also use some aftermarket parts on those inverters. They make some louvers that we can install, so a little background on that. Inverters need to have louvers in them to get the air through. If you trap the heat inside, they'll overheat and they'll fail. So all inverters have some method of getting the heat out. There's some aftermarket parts that we can fit on those inverters, on those louvers, that actually drop the sound level out of those inverters another 10 dB. Okay? So there are a number of mitigating measures that we can use. I think one thing that's probably the most important thing to point out is we've talked about the inverter noise, we've talked about typical rural and suburban noise levels. It's very important to point out that solar inverters do not operate at nighttime. So as soon as the sun goes down, solar plants are done. There's no more output for obvious reasons, okay? And they'll not turn on again until the beginning of the next day. Okay? And I have no other comments, but if you have questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Go ahead.
Thank you for your presentation. It was very enlightening, and I appreciate the comments on the noise mitigation and the last comment about it not being at night. I mean, that was my, I think, my largest concern. People sleep with their windows open. Even though it is a residential area, they're not used to having anything around. You got this hump, that would be really annoying to me, so, so that was good news. I was reading through the materials, and I just wanted you to confirm, and maybe you said it and I just didn't hear it, but the transmission lines, are they underground with this?
Yes.
So the concerns that were, the testimony during the prior hearing with the hearings officer, where people were concerned about emissions from transmission lines and what that might mean, did you address that or could you address that?
Yeah, I would be happy to do that. Pardon me. First of all, in our vernacular, we would refer to those as distribution lines. The reason we call them distribution lines is they're a much lower voltage. So transmission lines in our business are usually at 69,000 volts and higher, and often 115,000 volts. These are the types of lines you're used to seeing when you drive down the road and you see what we call the lattice towers, large poles with the big wires on them. Distribution lines, on the other hand, are at about 13,000 volts, so you can see that they're about a tenth of that voltage. Distribution lines are the lines that you might have running right through your neighborhood streets, delivering power to your home. Those are the same voltage-level lines that would connect this power facility, generating facility, with our substation. So first of all, I want to point out that it's a lower voltage level. The other thing I do want to point out, as you mentioned, is it is intended to be all underground. We don't, won't have anything new overhead as a result of this project, and there's two reasons for one, that. One is it looks nice, but the other obvious one is when you're around a solar generating plant, you certainly don't want things up in the air because that will shade the panels, right, and reduce the amount of your output. Okay? So there were some questions, pardon me, there were some questions last time regarding electromagnetic generation, okay? And so we should talk about the fact that there are several sources of that at extremely low levels. So one source of that is the inverter cabinet itself. So electromagnetic force is measured by something called a gauss meter, and the units of electromagnetic force are gauss. If you were to go around that inverter cabinet in near proximity to it and measure that, that electromagnetic force level in gauss would be very similar to what the microwave oven would be in your home. And similar to sound, that force drops off very quickly with distance as well. So just like the microwave oven in your home, when you get three feet away from that microwave oven with your gauss meter, you can no longer measure your own microwave oven. It drops off that fast. And the same is true of these inverters. Once you get a few feet away, there is no perceptible electromagnetic force. It's probably there. The thing is, is that your meter is reading all kinds of ambient electromagnetic radiation from the sun and from other sources, okay? And it can't discern the difference any longer. Okay? So that's the inverter cabinet. The other source that was mentioned at our last meeting was the underground lines themselves. And the issue there is, is that because they're buried underground, they're in electrical conduits, they're concrete encased, and there's earth over the top of them, there's, it's imperceptible, the amount of electromagnetic force generated by that. And then the panels themselves don't generate any. They're a completely passive device. They don't generate electromagnetic force.
Thank you.
Go ahead. Questions? Thank you, Mr. Chair. Probably a question just to help refresh my memory as to even why we may be here. I think in 2007, the legislature passed a renewable portfolio standard of mandating 20, is it 25% by the year 2025? Can you share, PGE, where you're at with that and how this comes into that particular strategy that has been mandated upon you?
Go ahead. Yeah, I can fill in a little bit of details on that. The renewable portfolio standard you're referencing, from my understanding to date, we're on track to get the 15% by the end of 2015 as required, and within that, there's a small band required for solar. My understanding, again, is that we have met that for the 2015 timeframe, and this project would not necessarily play towards that requirement.
To follow up if I may, Mr. Chair. This potentially would be for your 2015 to 2025.
The next step is 20% in 2020, and then 25% in 2025, and that would be one of the potential goals is for the 2020 requirement.
And if I remember right, hydro is not considered renewable, correct? Even though it is?
It depends. I don't know the detail specifically, but existing hydro is typically not counted towards that. New, I think they call it low-impact hydro would.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Well, I just, if I could comment, if I may.
Sure.
It's, I mean, you're here today because of something that the people, that elected representatives of our state have said this is what we want to do, so we've got to find ways to be able to do it, so appreciate it.
I have a couple questions, and maybe you've said it and I just didn't catch it. Well, one is, I'm not a, I don't know if I really buy this, but there was some controversy from reflective light causing damage to bird, et cetera, in some of these. Is there any provision for that, or is that a real concern?
Yes, I'd be happy to address that. So there were some articles written, and I've read them as well in the last month or so, concerning some solar generating facilities in the southwest, and I believe it's Nevada was the one that gained the most press. This facility is nothing like that. Let me explain. The panels that we use are called solar photovoltaic panels. They're very passive. They take the sunlight into a silicon, which converts that sunlight energy into electricity. They don't generate heat. They don't do anything actively. The facilities that you're talking about are called solar concentration plants. They're quite different. It's fascinating technology, but we're not applying it here. Essentially, the technology you're thinking about down in the southwestern United States...
They use as mirrors to concentrate.
They use mirrors, and they focus all of that energy up to a tower that's about 600 feet high, and up at the top of that tower, they're gathering that energy and using it to, they take that energy and they put it into a liquid material. In this case, I believe it's molten salt. So you can imagine how much energy it takes to get salt to melt. All of that energy is being beamed up from those mirrors up to that tower, and indeed, it's a fact that if a bird flies through that concentrated beam, that's the end of him. This facility is not like that in any way.
Then, I just haven't really, again, you may have said it, I haven't really heard kind of the, and I know nothing about electricity, except don't hang on, but when we talk about our waste energy facility here in Brooks, we talk about it generates enough to power the city of Woodburn. So can you kind of give me a scale? What does this, what does this do?
Do you have numbers on that? Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay.
4.1 megawatt.
Sorry?
4.1 megawatt.
Yeah. So I can describe it in these terms. I appreciate the comment. When you're looking at solar, you have to realize that the sun isn't always shining. We talk about any of our plants, whether it's hydro, solar, wind, we talk about them in terms of capacity factor. Capacity factor means, if you look at a generator of any kind, let's say a hydro generator, and it's rated for a certain number of megawatts output, 25-megawatt output, for example, if you look at the output from that machine at the end of a year, it's not going to be 25 megawatts all throughout the year. Okay? Solar happens to have one of the lower capacity factors of a generating type that you could choose. That's sort of solar's downfall. That's sort of solar's downfall. Solar's upside is, is that the, there's no fuel. The fuel comes from the sun, which doesn't cost us anything. So a solar plant has a capacity factor in Salem of about 14, 14, 15%. Okay? So we measure that. Let's go back and run through some of the high, the high-level math here. We're putting in a plant that has a nameplate rating of four and a half megawatts. Okay? So that means if it was a bright sunny day like today, and the, and it's, the sun is high in the sky, the thing is on, it's probably putting out its full nameplate value, 4.5 megawatts. As the day goes on, the sun starts to go down, of course, that output goes down. At nighttime, it goes to zero. If you measured that at the end of the year and said, how much did it output, it would be 4.5 megawatts times 365 days a year, times 24 hours a day, times the 14% capacity factor. Okay? And that gets to the number of homes that it would generate energy for.
Fine. You know, I'm really sorry I asked.
Oh.
But thank you.
Sorry about that.
Well, it made sense, but I still don't know how many homes for 12% of the day it might light up, but I assume it's a big number.
You think that was more complicated than land use?
Yeah, we're getting there.
It seems simple, doesn't it?
All right, any other relevant land use questions? All right, thank you. We may call you back for a chance to, for a final statement.
Okay, thank you.
We, pardon me. All right. Before you leave, if you would, sign this sheet too, please. We have two people signed up, one without, I guess, in general comments, and one in opposition. So I'll ask the opposition, Joanne Collins, if you'd come up and make your testimony. Again, if you'd give your name and address.
Very welcome.
Why don't you go ahead over there too, please, Joanne? And if you'd pull the microphone close to you, please.
He was really tall. How's that? Is that okay?
Good.
I'm Joanne Collins, and that's, do you want me to spell that?
No.
Okay. And I live at 372 Hampton Lane. I'm the person with the longest boundary that borders PGE's property. And before I say anything else, I would like to thank the folks from PGE. I think they've, they've done a good job of addressing concerns and being responsive to, to public, public concerns. So having said that, there are some things that I'm still not terribly comfortable with with regard to the proposed solar plant. They have said that the panels aren't going to contain anything that would be, that would have any, any components that would be dangerous. My question is, what happens when some enterprising soul gets in there and decides to smash the panels? We have a lot of folks who travel through this area, who are homeless and transient. And I believe I read that there is not a plan to fence this area on the south, on the southern border. I think in the document, there was something about some portion of it wasn't going to be fenced. And I think that's going to be perhaps an issue. I just recently had to call the sheriff to come and get somebody off of my property who had gotten access via PGE's property. At any rate, I'm concerned about the materials in the panels. What's the plan for decommissioning this thing? If the plan, if the panels are good for 20 to 25 years, what happens when PGE decides, well, we're kind of done with this, and the technology's moved on, we have better options, we want to decommission this? What happens to this land at that point? Do the structures that are holding the panels, will they just come out? Will this land be damaged to the point where it's, it's at some point just turns into like a brown field, or is it going to go back to being something that someone can grow crops on? Because that's what, what it's being used for now, is crops are being grown on it. I'm concerned about the impact on the flow of water in the area. That wetland area that is quite prominent in the, the center of the portion of land that's directly to the west of me, that area all feeds into, I think, Fruitland Creek that then is part of the Pudding River drainage system. But the land that's directly to the south of my property has a significant slope to it. And there are a lot of very large old trees on the property that I'm assuming will have to be torn down so that they get maximum sunlight onto the property. And with the lost, loss of that significant vegetation, what's that going to do to contributing to flooding in the Pudding River drainage system? So I think that's an issue, and I think it's something that probably ought to be addressed. The last discussion that I heard had to do with, there was a comment about the rail line, that's the old decommissioned rail line. I believe that that decommissioned rail line belongs to someone else. There was a reference today to an easement through that, and I'm assuming that that has happened, or, I think that's, that's still something that's, that's pending in this I'd love it if you'd bury all of the distribution lines down Hampton Lane. I think it'd be, it'd be wonderful. We have to kind of keep our fingers crossed every time we have an ice storm, so I don't want it, it weighs down those, those lines. But I was, I was glad to hear some of the responses regarding electromagnetic force. The Union of Concerned Scientists has made a number of statements regarding the fact that this is an unknown quantity when we put it next to a residential area. I know they said, well, it's, it's like, it's not any worse than your microwave, but my, my microwave doesn't run for hours and hours and hours while I'm in proximity to it. But what I'm really here today to, to talk about are three issues. One has to do with my property where it fronts to Hampton Lane. In the report that I received, it states that the road will be widened, centered on the existing paving for Hampton Lane. That paving was put in by the residents. We all pooled our resources and paid to have it paved so that we didn't have quite so much of a dust problem. But where my property fronts Hampton, just past my driveway, the asphalt ends. And I brought some pictures, if you'd like to see them, of what I'm talking about. There's a ditch at the front of my property, and when I clear the area in the front, I mow that. If the road is centered, if the widening centers on the existing asphalt, I'm going to lose the ability to use power equipment to mow that. I'm going to have to do it by hand because it'll, it'll drop down into the slope. On PGE's side of the road, it's flat. And since, the only reason this road needs to be widened is because PGE's traffic needs to be able to get in there, I would like to request that the, that the county have that road widened, just taking the land from PGE's side as opposed to mine. It was, it was pointed out to me that, isn't that the county's job to, to mow the, the road in front of your property? But the county hasn't done it for years. I've been, been taking care of that. One other issue that I think is one that needs to be addressed has to do with security. We have had problems with folks who, for whatever reason, find a dead-end road with places to kind of hide out to be very appealing, and we have to call the sheriff. I have, in the past, called the security number that PGE posts, but when I've called that, their security folks have been considerable distances away. And just a little over a week ago, I had a felon on my property and had to, had to have the sheriff come and take him away. And he had decided to park on PGE's property because nobody was there, so. So it is, it's going to be an ongoing concern. I think it's going to be an attractive nuisance, and I would like to have some reassurances about security plans in place for that. And the only other issue that I had was, was with the clearing of the property line to the south of my property. I don't think that property line has been exposed to daylight in 50 years. And so I was talking with the folks from PGE earlier today, and I think we'll probably be able to work out a good neighbor solution to that. So I'm not too worried about that. Those are my issues.
Questions or comments?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, maybe we could have somebody from the county talk about the widening of the road that's, that's part of the, the report that we read and where that would actually happen. I think I'd like to know about that.
Would you like the photographs?
You want to submit them for the record? All right, can we share everything? All right, thank you, Jo.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then once, without a designation of support, opposition, Michael Johnson?
Gee, it's nice to see you again. I haven't seen you for so long. I'm Michael Johnson. I am the chair of the East Salem Suburban Neighborhood Association. PGE's plant is prominent in the neighborhood. I'm a supporter of alternative energy sources, and I do it in my own home. We have solar on the roof. It's been good to us so far. But we've had some questions about the proposal already that I'd like PGE to address, and also for the county. In the opening remarks, both in the hearing and here today, it's kind of a futuristic plan in that if you grant us the zone change, then we'll go forward, and we can't go forward until you give us the zone change. It seems like this could be a conditional use. If you do these things, yes, you have the zone change. But if you don't do these things, no, you don't get the zone change. So that's one. Two, we've talked with some of the neighbors, and because their concern is that PGE will not be a good neighbor, or that the use of the land, the, the other 25 acres that's not under solar panels, will be used either as follow ground or not be used at all. The neighbors would really like you to be constructive with that land as best you can. It's now in some degree of agriculture. They'd like you to continue that. Next question, again, security. What level of fencing and is there going to be that will keep unwanted people out of there? There are some things that they shouldn't be touching, or you shouldn't even have access to. The other one that we addressed at the hearing, I know you took notes, or PG took notes, and that was crossing the rail line. It's private property. I suspect that there are condemnation rights of some kind that will allow them to get, put line, transmission lines under that, that property. The other question, too, comes is, of all the land on the Bethel site, there appears to be quite a large space, has that been considered for the use of any solar, additional solar arrays that would boost your energy output and get you, get you closer to your And you, you did address the sound issue, that there are some baffles that you could create that would lower the sound. These would be daytime sounds, not nighttime sounds. And you did talk about the drop, the sound on the inverters drops to zero, which I'm sure will take care of some of the neighbor concerns. And you continue to use the word properly mitigated. I guess I would ask the question a little deeper, when it comes to making some of these changes that you're talking about, how you'd handle these. It always seems to be in the future, not in, here's how we've designed it, which gets back to the original question of, well, gee, Marion County, if you give us this zone change, then we'll go forward. Even if you got the zone change, what promise is there from PGE that you're going to go forward and do the things that you say you're going to do? I guess that's pretty much at the heart of it. It doesn't sound like there's a full-on planned solution yet. It's more in the, it seems to be in the wish, wish stage at this point. And that you have to comply with the state of Oregon's demand that you create alternative energy sources, and this seems to work. I mean, I would hope you, you're able to do it and create it and meet all the needs. It just seems to be still futuristic. I think that should do it.
All right, thank you. And if the applicants, Jeff in particular, you want to make any response to what you've heard, it's an opportunity for that.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Brintano. And I've asked the technical folks from PGE to join me because they'll be able to answer some of the more technical questions, including site security. I'd like to mention this question of which comes first, the land use approval or the project design? It has to be the land use approval. Having a site appropriately designated for this use is a prerequisite to everything that follows. And there's a lot that follows. There are a number of regulatory reviews and approvals and financial considerations. Oregon PUC was one thing, other types of regulatory approvals that the PGE experts know about. Certainly, the project cannot be designed with certainty until we know what it's being designed for. The first thing you have to have is a place to put it. So the land use approval comes first, and then the other regulatory approvals occur after that. Without having land use approval, there's really no point in moving forward. And that's the complex world that we live in. So I think at this point, I'd like to have the technical experts address the site security question, the question of what happens if a panel breaks, other things of that nature. Then I'll come back and wrap up the land use issue.
Okay, I hope I was able to get all of the issues here. So the first issue I'd...
Still going to be closer.
Oh, certainly, sorry about that. First issue I'd like to talk about was the issue of the panels themselves, any sort of hazard that they might create from chemicals within them, or what if they get broken and that kind of thing? How are they replaced? So I'll talk for just a few minutes about the construction of a typical PV panel. Photovoltaic panel consists of from 60, there's different designs, between 60 and 72 individual solar modules that are approximately six inches by six inches across. So you take 60 or 72 of those, you put them in this metal and glass framework, and you press the whole thing together. It's a fairly complex manufacturing process that gets that accomplished. But inside that panel, as I mentioned before, there is no liquid. Silicon, I believe, is the most abundant element on the planet. It basically is glass. It behaves a lot like glass. It is breakable. I mentioned that the silicon modules are sandwiched in between two pieces of glass, so there's some more glass. We have had, because we have some experience with these types of plants, we have had broken modules for various reasons, damage. We've had at least one that I know of that simply decided to break. But, you know, they've been hit with rocks and wrenches and that kind of thing. Our experience is that when they break, the panel is still intact. It's a lot like breaking the windshield in your car, and that it cracks, it breaks, it looks horrible, but it stays in one piece. It's not inconceivable, though, that if you really wanted to destroy this thing, that you could get glass on the ground. That's completely conceivable. But all of those chemicals that are in there are inert. It's silicon, there's a fair bit of copper in there, there's some gold in there. They're all inert chemicals that are not a hazard whatsoever. We had a question a little earlier about replacement. The panels are guaranteed, I believe in our specification, we've written 25 years. The panels are guaranteed for 25 years. That means these panels are valuable to us for 25 years, because if one should break or if it should fail to work or degrade and it doesn't produce energy any longer, it's in our best interest to remove that panel, get with the manufacturer, get a replacement, and put a new panel on there. So that's something that's common to us. We do it on occasion. Let's see, the question of the fence, I want to be very clear on that, that the plan absolutely includes fence on all sides, clearly. And there were some other questions on the fence. What does the fence look like? The fence is a typical chain link fence, seven feet in height. We have a preference that we've written into our specification for PVC coating, or they call it a vinyl coated fence. What's nice about that is you take the typical galvanized metal chain link fence, they dip that in a black vinyl coating, and it tends to be more obscure that way. It's not quite as visual when you dip that in that black coating. The other thing is, is the fence lasts longer, obviously, because it's additionally protected from corrosion. Typically, on top of that fence, on the top rail of the fence, we put something, I think they call it bird wire, or forgotten the exact term, but essentially, it serves two purposes, but they're sharp little spikes that come out the top of the fence, and as the name implies, they keep the birds from landing on the fence. But the other thing they do is they greatly deter somebody climbing over that fence. They're quite sharp, and they're not something you want to mess with. And we've done that before with good success.
Excuse me, could I ask you a question about the fence before you move on?
Certainly.
So I think perhaps what is causing some confusion is the recommendation of the hearings officer under the conditions list C. It says, prior to application for building permits, either remove fencing, including a metal swing gate from within the southern portion of Hampton Lane, public right-of-way adjacent to 320, blah, 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 or obtain a gate permit from Marion County Public Works. So could you explain why they're asking you to remove the fencing? And then it sounds like you're replacing it, and you are getting a permit of some sort, so.
Jeff, can you help with that?
No, that condition pertains to a gate that's across the Hampton Lane right-of-way, not the site perimeter, security fencing. And it would be removed, or it's in the right-of-way, so it either has to have a permit or be removed. And I believe that's what that condition is referring to. That was from Public Works.
Okay, because I heard the comment from testimony, something about the south side and the fence not being on the south side, and so I'm assuming that perhaps there was some confusion around what that condition referred to.
Yes, that comment was in reference to the south side of the property itself, which would border the north end of the former railroad right-of-way, and not the little gate that's on Hampton Lane. It was a slightly different issue. So what Kevin is saying is that the solar site will be completely enclosed within fencing, and that addresses that particular question.
Okay, there was a question about the easement that we'll need across what used to be a rail line and is now private property, and it is a fact that we have not worked on that easement yet. That's yet to be done. I heard a question about additional property on the Bethel site that looks like it's not going to be utilized for this purpose, and that's quite correct. If I may, just a minute, and I'll point up there. I believe that's the section of land that you're talking about. If you take a closer look at that property, and we did, it has a lot of overhead electrical lines on it that are serving that substation with our transmission voltages. So if you think about PGE's utility trucks that we use to service those lines, they're quite large. They're over 40 feet in length. They have the big hydraulic bucket on them that our crews use. They need a good 20 feet of space along those existing lines in order to maintain those transmission lines, which are absolutely vital to our system. So by the time you mark out these 20-foot roadways for our trucks, there's very little left on that part of the property to put solar panels. And then the other thing is, which is somewhat obvious, but just again, because you have the poles and you have the overhead lines, that area would be subject to shading, and so it's not a good area to add additional PV generation. As far as from an engineering standpoint, those are the items that I captured, tried to address.
And from the land use standpoint, pardon me, Commissioner, was there a question?
Maybe I do have a question. What about the removal of trees that was brought up and the flooding mitigation issue?
Wetlands.
Wetlands.
Yeah, very good. So let's start with the removal of trees. If you look down at the south part of the project, let me point. We did do a shading study for that area of the project. So when we look at this project, and one of the things that makes it an ideal site is that there aren't many trees that would shade the panels, an obvious requirement for a photovoltaic site. We did a shading study on those trees to the south, and we determined that even at their current height, they will create a very minimal shading problem that reduces the output of the project. I believe it was about 1%. Is that about right? The trees do not have to be removed on that lower level, okay? It is conceivable that we may want to go out there and trim them down a little bit, because by our study, if you take them down approximately 10 feet from their existing height, it makes all the difference in the world, and that 1% loss goes away, and it seems like a fairly small price to pay to get that 1% generation back. So now I'll talk about the drainage a little bit. So it's important to understand that adding the solar panels to the site really don't impact the drainage of the site in total. So you have the panels, you have rows in between the panels through which you could drive a small vehicle like a pickup truck. So the rainfall that would normally hit that ground and be absorbed into the ground, you're not changing really the surface area of that ground. You're redirecting a little bit into the driveways in between the panels, but there should not be any type of drainage change on that property to what currently exists.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. A couple more questions. This is probably a land use issue, and I just want to make sure that I understand this. So you talked about the land use approval coming first to be able to move forward on the project. And what would change physically on the property if we did this land use change? What would change physically on the property if the project never moved forward? Would there still be farming, trees, et cetera?
Could be. Now, that's a very good question, so we need to explore that a little bit. First off, the property could remain as it is today, as vacant land, which presumably would continue to be leased for some type of farm activity. But the land was acquired to serve as a noise buffer from a power generation plant that is gone, no longer exists. And so there's really no need for the property to be retained to serve as a noise buffer. This would be up to Portland General Electric and what they wanted to do with the property, but it is zoned for rural residential development. So conceivably, at some point in the future, if the company decided that the property was no longer necessary, because there's no need to provide a noise buffer any longer, the property could be developed, if not by PGE, by a successor owner, since its zone AR, the AR zone, has a minimum two-acre lot size per dwelling. So theoretically, on 52 acres, it could be divided into 26 two-acre home sites. Each of those home sites would have its own septic tank. Each of those home sites would have a well. Each of them would create traffic. So what we would see is a continuation of rural residential development as currently exists in this area, only at a much greater level. Instead of having 52 acres of vacant property with very little activity on it, you would have 26 home sites with whatever level of activity is normally associated with that.
Well, if I may, so just, so I'm understanding this. If the zone change moved forward to P, and PGE, for some reason, didn't move forward, I'm just trying to clarify this for people that are in...
Sure.
...asking these questions, then the, to do the residential acreage developments, you'd have to come back and ask for another zone change, correct?
That's right. Essentially, this zone change would have to be reversed.
Right.
Put it back in the AR zone. On the other hand, if it were rezoned to public, P, and the project never occurred, essentially, the same thing that takes place on the property today could continue. You could still farm the property. It would be eligible for one dwelling in conjunction with the farming activity on the property, and really not much else. The public zone's a very limited zone. The hearings officer determined that the property, in addition to being zoned public, should also be placed under what's called the limited use overlay provision, in which certain uses that are normally allowed outright in the public zone become conditional uses. So this rezone does not throw it open to anything that could occur. You couldn't put a fire station there without a conditional use permit review. You couldn't put a park there, or a ball field, or soccer field there without additional conditional use review and approval. So actually, the zone change takes away the capability for rural residential development and limits the uses of the property even beyond what a normally P-zone property would because of the limited use overlay.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, anything else? All right, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, and we'll look forward to a decision.
All right, Joe. You don't go back.
Thank you. So, Joe, just one, I think we've covered everything pretty well, but one question for the benefit of some of the comments that were made. So this is not just a zone change. This is a comprehensive plan amendment and a zone change and a conditional use application, all three in one. So can you describe, I counted nine conditions, if you count all the letters. The limited use overlay, it's long, but it really is one condition. And then it talks about in the sentence of the hearings officer's report, right after the recommendation but before the list that starts with ABC, it says, "Subject to modifications such as lighting limitations noted by applicant at hearing, and then, and the following conditions necessary for public health and safety." So can you just describe to people how that plays out? And then also, the first condition, even though it's a short sentence, is kind of a large condition, right? That they have to obtain all permits required by building inspection. So just, if you could just give sort of a general overview of what all this means?
Okay, so what the zone change comp plan changed, so the hearings officer looked at state laws applying to the code and the comprehensive plan, determined whether it could even look at the P-zone to begin with, and then, once you found that it met those criteria, recommended approval, limiting it to the uses that outlined. And as Jeff pointed out, basically, if you look at the conditions for the uses, under A, farm use, forest use, dwellings, it's limited to that for the entire property. But also, reviewing a conditional use that will apply if they want to go ahead and develop the solar array. So that's where the conditions are coming in, that are, those are basically conditions of the conditional use.
Right, but you're missing the larger question. So it's not just on the limited overlay part, but it's also that there are conditions listed to actually get the comp plan and the zone change.
Correct.
One is that they get permits, and then the other one says that they need to make lighting limitations, and so they've made some representations at the hearing that then are really included in what the hearings officer is saying. It's not just a carte blanche, you get a public zone. There are things that they have to comply with that they represented, so can you explain that?
Correct. For example, one of the issues the hearings officer brought up was screening. There was talk about screening, so we required, it should require landscaping, permanent landscaping of mature plants around the perimeter. Here, they've indicated they are going to fence the entire property. That could also be added in there to make sure that that's very clear, clear that that's a requirement to develop the solar array. The other permits referenced in here talk about building permits, obviously structural permits. Public Works has some permits for road improvements that were talked about by one of the neighbors. They want some additional right-of-way to bring it up to standard. All these things are required in order to develop the property as PG wishes. There are other requirements, they're sort of referenced here, but for instance, there are provisions in Public Works that you cannot block historical drainage ways. You just can't do that. It's one of the, you also cannot increase the amount of runoff on the property over a certain level if you're going to cover area. All those engineering requirements apply, even though they're not specifically spelled out in the conditions.
All right, so if I could just follow up one more. So the discussion about that this has to happen first, and then the development occurs second, as the development then occurs, that's when the applicant is working with Marion County Public Works, the different divisions, whether it's roads, or whether it's noise, or what it might be, and then that plan comes forward much more specifically in the next phases of the project?
Correct. They look at it in detail.
Right, okay, thank you.
Jeff, the only one I didn't, question that I didn't hear addressed, Joe, excuse me, was the right-of-way issue. And is that kind of self-determined, or would you be able to speak on it?
I can only, Public Works believes that the roadway needs to be widened, the gravel portion, to 20 feet wide. The condition says, centered on the existing paved section. I believe, and I don't know if there's engineering requirements that limit it to just that, but I would think they would be willing, if there's any advantage or if there's not a disadvantage to keeping it as close to the current alignment as possible on the non-PGE property, I think that they would probably look at that at the time that they came in to do the improvement. So unless there's really an engineering concern that actually has to be right exactly in the center, they may be able to taper it to the side one way or the other.
Well, it seems then it shouldn't be a condition that it says it is, and perhaps we ought to modify that a little bit. modify that a little bit.
You could put--
To the extent possible, or something like that.
Something like that.
Yes, that would be fine, and I can work on a condition that will accomplish that wording.
All right, any other questions for Joe? All right. So now it's time for us to decide what we want to do with it. We have a recommendation from the hearings officer to approve, or you can approve, you can modify, you can hold off, and get additional information, whatever we wish.
Mr. Chair, so just to be clear, we could ask for some of those modifications that were just suggested.
So if I could ask, Joe, what, so the next step that comes out of this is, if we approve this, do you bring back an ordinance actually for the, for the change, for the comprehensive plan change?
If you approve the request, then we'll bring back an ordinance with findings and then conditions.
Right, so you can then direct the staff to come back with the ordinance and includes the modifications to the conditions as discussed at the hearing, and then he'll come back and it will be everything that you have in the report with the tweaks that we've talked about and possible couple additions that we talked about.
Correct. The conditions may be reformatted a little bit.
All right, so perhaps a motion to that effect in closing the hearing, if you would, Commissioner Carlson.
Sure, so Mr. Chair, I would move that we close the public hearing and that we approve the comprehensive plan amendment, zone change, and conditional use applications with the conditions as listed in the hearings officer's report, and a couple modifications of conditions. One was the, under D, where it says centered on the existing paved section, we'll modify that so that there's more flexibility in that possible language, to the extent possible, but Joe will come back with appropriate language. You talked about adding the fencing requirement.
Yes.
Is that correct? And I can't remember, was there anything else that we talked about?
That's all I recall at the moment.
That's all I've got, too.
All right, so those two, two changes to the, to the conditions listed, so that, and then direct staff to bring back an ordinance with the appropriate language in the ordinance for board approval.
Is there a second?
I'll second the motion.
All right, it's been moved second to close the public hearing to approve with the conditions listed, asking for some modifications of a couple different items that have just been described, and then come back with a final order. Got it? Okay, any further discussion?
Yes, I just want to make one comment.
Sure.
Well, I want to thank everyone that came and all of the work that has gone into this. The public process, I think, has made this better. I appreciate the fact that comments were made, that PGE has been responsive and has been working with the neighbors. That's incredibly important. Sometimes the land use process is, how would you describe it, not intuitive, right? And the process that we go through and the order that we do it and the legal requirements are not requirements that we make up here at Marion County, they are governed by state law. We have to make sure that when we go through this process, that our decisions here will be successful against any potential appeals, and so we are very careful and thoughtful about how we do that. I also wanted to publicly say, because I don't, I have, probably don't say this enough, how much I appreciate the fact that we have a hearings officer in Marion County and the very thorough job that she does. I mean, I am, I've become more proficient in land use over the 12 years I've been a county commissioner, but I certainly don't ever claim to be an expert in land use. She lays out the most thorough, logical reports where you can go through every item of each requirement in state law, and then each requirement in the Marion County code, and takes into consideration all the various arguments that are made in her hearing, and then lays that out for the board so that we can look, and oftentimes then we just have to narrow down to these very small places where there might be differences of opinion in terms of whether the board can interpret something differently or not. And I think we're very fortunate to have Ann Gasser and to have the work that she does for us in Marion County, and because of that, I think it improves upon the process here. So I just wanted to say that as well.
Thank you. All right, it's been moved seconded. Anything else? Question on favor, then say aye.
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 Aye. Motion passes, thank you all for your concern. Joanne, perhaps in just a few minutes, I'll talk to you and explain how this procedure has to go. All right, thank you all. The last thing to do this morning is to read the places we'll be together in the coming week, starting at 3:30 to 5:00, Economic Development Advisory Board, Commissioner's Boardroom, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. Tomorrow morning, on September 11th, from 7:00 to 9:00, American Red Cross Annual Realty Heroes Breakfast at Salem Convention Center, Willamette River Room, 200 Commercial Street, Southeast in Salem. Monday, 8:30, Commissioner's Calendar Review, Silverman Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street, Northeast in Salem. That's followed by Management Update in the same location from 9:00 to 11:00. Tuesday, rather an important meeting, I believe, Work Session Having to Do With Public Works' Stormwater Service Fee Proposal. Location, Silverman Conference Room, 5th floor, 555 Court Street. Next Wednesday, the 17th, starting at 9 o'clock, our next board session, where I'll start it by Ms. speaking the Pledge of Allegiance, but I will continue to do so.
It's the sublimity statement.
It's the correct way. All right, anything else this morning? Hearing none, let's call this meeting adjourned.